Check two, one, two. Check two, one, two. Check two, one, two. Check two, one, two.
Is my microphone on? We all, ladies and gentlemen, if we can find our seats. Yes, I apologize.
Thank you, Lexi, for getting me going here. I appreciate it. Aloha, everybody. And aloha to everyone listening live and watching live. We appreciate your interest and spending the time with us today with some of our county council candidates. My name is Renee Hamilton-Kombe. I'm the executive director of the YWCA. And it's our second night of our forum 2024, so very excited. Mahalo again to all of you for being here. I would also like to thank our candidates themselves for being here and also for running for elected office. Not the easiest job, right? Not the easiest job. So they're willing to be of service in our community. And I think we owe a big kudos to everyone who considers running for that. I'd also like to thank the working committee that helped put this together. With a special shout out to my friend over there, Mia Carroll, who's the YWCA Assistant Director, Acting ED. She really, really was very instrumental in putting this together and getting us over the finish line here. Also like to thank our community partners. You'll see in the back, the Zonta Club of Kauai. They've helped us, been a really active partner from the very beginning. And also the Kauai Planning and Action Alliance is a major partner to get us over the finish line here and be here tonight. I would also like to thank KKCR, Kauai Community Radio for broadcasting live, and our Hawike Public Television for being here and broadcasting live. And also to the Rice Street Business Association for the sound system. So it takes a lot to put these together. So big mahalos to everybody involved. Because our three partnering organizations here, we are largely focused on serving the needs of women, keke, and our island community in general. But we wanted to highlight the issues of significant concern to these groups. As a result, we're thrilled to be here tonight, having this candidate forum, and to have an opportunity to ask the candidates about these identified issues. You can find out more about our partners if you visit the back, and the YWCA has a table back there. Or go online at ywahinevote.org. Some of the candidates have put together, we had other questions that we sent out to all the candidates, and you can find their responses on that website. We do want to emphasize that from the start of the planning to the very end here, our work together in putting this together is strictly nonpartisan. Please be assured that no candidate, regardless of any personal or professional relationships, have received any type of advantage at all. Every candidate has been given equal time and opportunity to prepare, and will be given equal time and opportunity throughout the forum tonight. Let's get started. We're really fortunate. Lexi did an amazing job tonight. I know she's going to do an amazing job last night and tonight. Lexi Jones, she graduated in 2016 from the University of Washington with a bachelor's degree in media and communications. She moved back to Kauai to be closer to her family after graduation. Lexi currently works as a morning DJ on HI-95 Kauai, the six to 10 early morning shift. Lexi is a charismatic woman who strives to pick up those around her and to serve her community. She walks, walks her talk. That's Lexi. Lexi not only can be found in the gym working as a personal trainer with clients or teaching classes, but you're also going to find her planning community events for the Rice Street Business Association. Look for her at the Rice Street Block Party on October 12th, coming up. Wonderful. She also sits as a board of director for the Kauai Federal Credit Union and as the vice chair for Hawike Kauai Community Television. We're honored that Lexi is here again this year to moderate this forum, and I'm going to turn it over to her very capable hands. Thank you, Lexi.
Thank you, Renee. I'm Lexi Jones. Thank you for joining us this evening. Now, as we begin, in order to allow for some in-depth understanding of the candidates and issues, tonight we will be a combination of long-answer questions and two rapid-fire short-answer rounds. Each candidate will be asked the same amount of questions and have the same amount of time to answer the questions. The questions have been assigned to the candidates randomly. In order for all candidates to have an equal opportunity, our timekeeper will be tracking for a 30-second warning and for the end of the allocated time. We thank the candidates in advance for adhering to the allocated time. We ask the audience to refrain from applauding or in other ways demonstrating support or non-support for the candidate. There will be a time at the end of the forum to visit with the candidates and ask any further questions you might have. Now, this forum is being broadcast live on KKCR and Hawike, and the recordings will be accessible online following the event. For additional information, visit ywahinevote.org. Candidates were also given the opportunity to submit written responses to a questionnaire, which are available on the ywahinevote website. Now, let's get started. We are going to begin with our opening statements. Each candidate will be given two minutes for their opening comments. We will start with Councilmember Felicia Cowden.
Test? Yes. All right. I am Felicia Cowden. I am honored to be running for my fourth term in office as your Kauai County Councilwoman. It has been a delight and an honor to be able to really put people first. I'm out there listening to people coming and helping you to adjust with your challenges and your problems. Happy to come and make an interview and appointment with you, whatever way I can actually help. My background started in engineering. I also had a Honolulu surf company for about 18 years. So I had a lot of time working with the community and the customers. And so I look at all of my constituents with that kind of care that I want to have. I've done education, really worked on alternative agriculture, neighborhood agriculture, food foresting, how we build resilience. I have had the joy of doing a lot with education and working with our kids and students. And then I'm looking at KKCR and Hawike as part of who I am and why I'm in office, having been a community affairs programmer, helping to mediate community challenges every week for now almost 14 years, and I've been a contributor on Hawike as well, telling our community stories, because that's a pathway, how we solve problems. And solving problems has been one of my biggest focuses, trying to create win-win solutions, not necessarily having to make a new law or a new tax, but looking at the problem and how we can work with intergovernmental pathways, landowners, businesses, and develop the challenges and solutions that we need. So I appreciate your support. I'm at feliciacowden.com, and I humbly ask for one of your seven votes.
Thank you. And next candidate, Abraham Abilado Jr.
Okay, guys. Good morning. My name is Abe Abilado. I am one of the candidates running for Kauai County Council. This will be my first time running as a candidate. A little background about me, guys. I was born and raised here on the island of Kauai. I went to high school in Waimea. Went to college in Montana, played football for four years, came home and became a fisherman. I've been a fisherman full-time for the last 18 years, 10 of which was a commercial fisherman. And then as soon as I met my wife, I figured out that fishing and relationship, somebody got to get neglected. So I still fishing as a charter fisherman now. So I've been charter fishing almost seven years, six of which are running for other companies, and now we finally own our own business. So I'm a small business owner on Kauai. My company name is Aukai Fishing. Our goal is to bring families and children out and teaching them what are precious resources. Ocean is something that everybody thinks they know about until you actually go out there and do it yourselves. Learning resources, learning what we have is very empowering, and teaching people how to get their own food is very powerful. In the world that we're living in right now, everything is now, 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 and that's farther from the truth. Yeah, I'm a father. I have a child, one baby girl. You may see her running around here from time to time. But my focus is on community, and I grew up in a time where you rather get caught by a policeman than your father. Okay, people laugh because that's the truth. We just gone astray from that, and we need to go back to our communities, taking care of one another, looking after one another. Just another quick one too. With mental illness, because we're going to talk about this tonight, I am a person with two family members with mental illness and alcoholism and homelessness.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next candidate for our opening statement will be Kipukai Kuuli'i.
Aloha. I'm Kipukai Kuuli'i, Council Vice Chair. In my time serving you, I've proven myself to be hardworking, trustworthy, and thoughtful. And I've demonstrated my strength with budgeting, my understanding of the issues, and my commitment to always doing my homework, listening carefully, and working collaboratively. To share a little bit about myself, I was raised in a low-income, working-class family and grew up in Kipukai Ranch, Honolulu low-income housing, and Old Puhi Plantation Camp. I traveled the world as a cast member of Upwe People, promoting multiculturalism and racial equality. And across the country as Pride at Work's first executive director, promoting cooperation between the labor and LGBTQ movements. I have nearly 40 years' experience working and volunteering in government, labor unions, nonprofits, and community organizations. I did finance work for the city of West Hollywood for most of the 90s before heading to our nation's capital to work in the AFL-CIO's Civil Rights Department. Coming home in 2001, I worked for the United Public Workers, Kauai Community College, and the YWCA of Kauai. To share my campaign platform, I'm hopeful that you will help me use my experience, my relationships, and my dedication to advocate and fight for responsible budgeting and limited taxes, job creation in local small businesses, affordable housing, boats, homes, and rentals, clean renewable energy to 100%, resilient communities and walkable towns, sustenance lifestyles including farming, gathering, ranching, hunting, fishing, and collaborative solutions to drug abuse, homelessness, traffic congestion, and much more. Love to hear from you.
Thank you.
Mahalo.
An opening statement from candidate Addison Bulisane.
Aloha. I just wanted to mahalo our hosts, YWCA, Zonta Club of Kauai, and Kauai Planning Action Alliance. Thank you so much for providing this opportunity for our community. And aloha everyone on KKCR and Hawike who's listening in right now and be watching this back. You know, I never imagined myself becoming a father or ever getting married. And today, my wife and my son is here. Hello. Zeneth Kila'a and my wife, Nikki Cristobal. And with the lens of being a new father of a five-month-old and a husband to Nikki, both being born and raised here on the island, there's certain things that you care about and think about in a different way, and I never imagined it being so important to me. The work that I've spent for the first year at county council has shifted. First, it was as a person who were born and raised here, wanting to take care of my community, someone that can devote time and energy and whatever skill set I had and grew when I moved away and came back home. But now it's way different. As a new dad, as a husband, things are different. And all you parents out there really know and feel this difference. Every single decision you make is a scary one. You wake up with dreams, good ones and bad ones, and then you get to work, you get to show up at your daily everything, and you just have a different feeling. And that's what I'm excited about. I really took this time to decide whether or not I wanted to serve and run again. And really, the biggest thing was to make sure that Zeneth could keep calling Kauai home. And it's one of those heavy burdens that I think weighs even harder when you become a father and when you become a husband, because the decisions every day matter, and you have to make decisions as fast as possible while seeing into the future and honoring the past that has come. So I'm excited to spend this time with you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. And last for opening statements, candidate Billy DeCosta.
Thank you. Special thank you to Zonta and YWCA. Thank you, Lexi. My wife and Lexi worked out together at the gym there, so special thanks to Lexi. You know, small-time plantation boy, grew up in Pakala, rocked my summers, carrying the tank to spray the weeds. Kind of put myself to school, California, went to Humboldt State University. My economics professor, which is my major, economics. John Grobey was personal friends with Alan Greenspan, who was Ronald Reagan's chief economist. So I was taught by one of the best professors, and they told me you got to buy and sell land three times in order to become wealthy and to provide wealth for your family. So my wife married 33 years, three sons, and we owned several homes on the island, 10 acres of land. And it's not a bragging. It's telling you that I'm a smart person. I know how to help you guys to make your dreams come true. I ran for politics so I can help our youth. Been a teacher since 1997. I've taught special education at Waimea High School. I taught disability children. I taught the woodshop where we made ukuleles. And I'm proud to say that I did 10 years in the environmental center up in Koke'ee doing environmental science. I was asked by the superintendent to take on the Kapaa Building Project, which we did the first tiny home with our students. Some of my girls ran the building and construction shop with their construction white hat and their plans. I want to let you guys know something else that's very important. I run my house. I run my house. I run the dishwasher. I run the washing machine. I run the blender. And it's all done on Saturdays when I cannot play senior softball, because my wife has a chore list for me. So I'm letting you guys know that women are empowered, and I raised three respectful sons to pick flowers for their girlfriends, to open a door, and to be respectful. That's who Billy DeCosta is. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, we'll have some long-answer questions. Candidates will have two minutes to respond to the questions they are asked. We are going to begin with a foundational question. To start us off, it will go Billy, then Addison, Kipukai, then it will go Abe and Felicia. So the first question, a common response for Kauai officials on social and economic issues is that they are, quote, "state-level problems, not the counties," end quote. To you, Billy, what is your philosophy on the role of county government? Which issues should the county take on? And how should it collaborate with the state or federal government and community partners on matters like housing, childcare, healthcare, and other social issues?
Well, I believe bridging the gap between state, federal, and county. When we take our trip to Washington DC, we meet with our congressional delegates. We meet with them. When you have that leadership quality, when you have that personality that you bond with people, people want to listen to your ideas. They want to bounce ideas off of you. Currently, right now, Lieutenant Governor Luke wants to increase childcare at two years old. We're doing that right now. We pass a budget to provide money so the county can build a childcare facility right here in Lihue, so county workers, state workers can have a place to drop off their kids. Her and I personally met at this last meeting that we had up at the Kahala Hotel that went for a NACO trip. It was called HZAC. When I did the hotel and TBR tax, we raised money. I had five votes. Mr. Addison Bulisane, Kipukai, they were one of the two votes that voted with me. We raised the hotel tax to take this money, $8 million a year, to put into a coffer fund to build middle-class housing. The county right now has a checkbook where they can go out and buy land, build infrastructure, and work with a developer of middle-class housing. People told me, "Don't do that during election season. You're going to cut your own throat." I'm not here as a career politician, you guys. I'm here to make solutions happen. We all hear the stories. What's the problems on Kauai? When do you hear the solution? We put in a solid solution. There's an ag build that Mel Rapose and I worked on to increase ag density on ag property, properties like in Kilauea, properties like in Kapaa, where they can now put in a guest dwelling next to the main house and use the infrastructure, water and electric that's already on the property. Ladies and gentlemen, those are solution-based policies by a politician. I'm not telling you the problem. I'm telling you we're going to fix it.
Thank you. Addison?
It's an interesting statement that often is shared when there is a difficulty in bringing people together. And so uniquely enough, you know, born and raised down the street, I was actually raised with my grandma. Basically, I thought I had three moms. It was kind of a weird thing. I lived in a house with my parents and my grandma, and my Auntie Rita used to watch us. And so when I was growing up, I had three moms, and I would always share that I had three moms. But what that did was it kind of shared with me from a young age that it was very important to collaborate with people, and especially to hear all sides of people's perspectives, so that when you're problem-solving, it's no longer just my perspective, but always looking at all different angles. And so before running for office and getting elected two years ago, primarily my work was about taking care of people, specifically as a chiropractor. But a lot of the work I did was actually just community organizing with all the experiences that you have had and we still continue to do here on Rice Street. From organizing the Rice Street Block Party to organizing different events, from helping artists do artwork, all the things. And so I take that in this first election season and first two years and have been able to collaborate with state officials, federal officials, our department heads. And some of the solutions that we've accomplished over the years was because there were solutions that have been worked on for years, and we were just able to bridge the gap. And so I think it's really important to understand that the majority of my job oftentimes is seen as creating legislation, but really, most of the time we spend is nurturing and taking care of relationships and making sure we're all working together. And so I see that as part of the time that I spend during state sessions that has happened from January to April. And throughout the year, I'm always in contact with our federal team to make sure that Kauai gets everything we need.
Thank you. Kipukai?
I think the most important thing is the quality of life for our people. So when you talk about the issues and how this is not a core county issue or this is not a county issue at all because it's social service-related and it's funded by the state. To me, when it comes to the state and the county, we're basically partners, and we're both interested in serving the people to ensure that they have a good quality of life. So that's everything. That's not just, you know, police and fire and trash pickup and parks and rec, the obvious stuff. I mean, some people would even say that our Office of Economic Development or even our transportation, it's not in the charter, so it's not as important, and when funding gets tight, then we should cut that. But if you think about it, you know, how do people get to work? They ride the bus, you know? How do people start a new business? You know, it's all important. And even more so, it's important that we respond to people. I'm a compassionate person, and I think we must do everything we can to lessen people's suffering and struggle and to make their lives better in every way that we can. And it's not easy, but we have to try, you know? And there's different ways that the county can do that, not always with a program or funding, but in different ways by supporting as well still. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Abe.
Sister, you can repeat the question.
Of course. Yes, of course. What is your philosophy on the role of county government? Which issues should the county take on? And how should it collaborate with the state or federal government or community partners on matters like housing, childcare, healthcare, and other social issues?
Okay, thank you so much.
Of course.
Okay, so my perspective and my angle probably going to be a little bit off the mainstream. But to me, my priority, like I said earlier, is our community. Okay? To me, as an island or as a group of people, it's very foolish to just think that seven people in a county council, one mayor in a seat, and one governor and one president can dictate and change all our lives. We as people of a community, we as people of an island, we got to be all held accountable for and help one another out. Okay? What is the biggest thing that people talk about right now? Sustainability. Sustainability is sustainability that, yeah? How sustainable is you guys' money? Yeah? Every time we got to say we got to build this, we got to build that, cost 10 million if we do this, cost 14 million if we do that. How many of you guys make $1 million in the last 10 years? Okay? A lot of things, guys. To me, starts from our homes, starts from our houses, starts with our family, building our keke up, right? Loving them, taking care of one another. Yeah? I used a term a couple days ago. It takes a village to raise a family or to raise a child. That mentality got to come back. What's done now never happened overnight. It happened in the last 30, 40. You know, it takes a long time to accumulate. So I think the mindset and the frame of mind that we got to think is now, we got to look out for one another. We got to take care of one another. Take initiative versus looking at somebody and saying, "You the one said you was going to promise this." I tell you, guys, if we all have to lift this table together, it would be much more easy if everybody in this room had taken a piece and lifted up the burden versus trying to rely on seven people who trying to get your vote so they can come into office and love everybody.
Thank you. And lastly will be Felicia.
Thank you, Felicia Cowden. So government is basically a team, and we all have to work together and collaborate. We have influence for some positions and we have authority in others. And so knowing where we have the best piece to contribute. And so I playfully say that council and county is kind of like the janitors of the political system. We take out the trash, flush the toilet, mow the lawn, put out the fire, fix the roads. That's our core function. So we have to always make sure that we're doing that, but we partner. I'm looking at our power company and our landowners, our people, our business community. We have to all function together to be able to address our biggest challenges. So what's those challenges? The challenges, in my view, is displacement from the island that happens because of housing problems, that happens because of infrastructure problems. And so like while we want to help with childcare and we can assist with those things, if everybody had a stable home that they could afford, they would be in a much better place. And so our kouliana, our sacred responsibility, is to make sure that we get our landfill, our wastewater, our fresh water up to speed. And we have been deficient on that for some time, especially since the decline of big agriculture. And with that also, very important, as we work together across this pa'ina and all our layers of government, to have effective evacuation routes and really get a good handle on floods and fires. And as our climate changes and we have certain adaptations that happen all the time, for whatever reason you might think they happen, we need to be able to have a little bit more inland and upland pathways. We have to learn from our past, from our traditional Hawaiian culture that was excellent at living resiliently on the island as well as our agricultural times. Thank you.
Now, moving into our next long-answer questions, it will be a few of our candidates to answer. it will be a few of our candidates to answer this one and then we'll move to the next. First to answer this question will be Addison Bulasun, then Abe Abilado, and then Billy DeCosta. Moving into the preface. Childcare is essential for both child development and a thriving local economy. In two thousand and twenty-three, Hawaii was ranked the second most expensive state for childcare. Here's your question. Should the county increase support for affordable, quality childcare? If so, what specific measures will you take to ensure this happens?
Yes, we should absolutely address this issue. Uh, having a five-month-old, I'm kind of a weird person where I am heavily organized with calendars. If you ever saw my calendar, I like have a, a thing for each time. Um, and so before Zenith was born, I had to figure out, you know, it's a twenty-four-seven hour job, right? You gotta take care of this thing for its life, for the rest of its life. And trying to figure out for the last five months how to make sure that Zenith is always cared for, um, and how we take care of our moms and our caretakers, um, has been a challenging job. Um, and one of the biggest challenges as a partner to that is making sure that everyone has support around. And so it's one of those things that luckily, I do live in a multi-generational home still with my parents and we rely heavily on my mom and dad and, um, Nikki's mom and dad. But without that support, we could not be parents. And we wouldn't even imagine being parents here on Kauai. And so I'm very excited for the initiatives that our current administration is making. Uh, one of the biggest ones, which is like was mentioned, there is a childcare facility that is being developed here on Kauai. And Lieutenant Governor, um, Sylvia Luke has prioritized and put funds towards our state. And our, uh, federal funds have been going towards making sure that, um, families can have that support. Um, and so my job really is to make sure these projects don't get stalled up and make sure that they connect to the community in the way that we want to receive this help. Um, oftentimes that we try to think and create these programs, specifically with guidelines that come from not, um, here, um, meaning that they're from the mainland. It does not fit our culture or fit our way of life. And so it's really important that these new programs are, are really focused on what is needed for the community here, not, um, some program that is not made or designed for us. And then lastly, I'll just say thank you.
Thank you. Next to answer this question will be Abe Abilado.
Okay, awesome. Thank you so much. So, uh, the first question is support affordable child, quality childcare. Okay, so what is, what is, uh, quality in your guys' mind, you know, in everybody's mind? For me, my, my support in quality childcare would be taking a child out into a garden, into a farm, on the ocean. Yeah, not teaching him up in a room and be like, "Okay, mama gotta work for eight hours. You gotta get picked up." There's no way for leave. Yeah. So in my, in my case, I would support childcare, but not in the orthodox way of thinking. Yeah? My brother in the West Side, Kumano Ikiala, is a nonprofit. He's a, he was a taro, taro farmer. And he gives little projects of, um, basically daycare 'cause when you take the kids over there, you know, you get irresponsible for them. So my, my things would do is I would, I would, I would build up programs of our island to replace what we think childcare is supposed to be. Okay? I mean, learning blocks and whatever is all good, but you can learn way more. We, we island people. So I, I think like an island person, yeah? So getting your hands dirty, learning where our food come from, learning about our island is important. So supporting programs like that, you know? I'm talking about like five and up. Thirty, from young kid time, like Bulasun said, grandparents is, is angels 'cause most people cannot afford to stay home. Also, another thing too, to support, uh, family as a whole, is teach financial literacy. Build people up to start your guys' own business. It's hard working on worker and it's hard being a business owner. Choose your heart, Marlo.
Thank you. Next to answer will be Billy DeCosta.
Thank you. Thank you for this question there, Lexi. Um, as an educator, twenty-four years teacher, I've seen it happen. You know, sta- statistics say that a child's brain is eighty percent developed by two years old. Eighty percent, ninety percent by three years old. When we went to our HSA convention and sat down with Governor Green and Lieutenant Governor Sylvia Luke and had breakfast, Councilmember Kabalyo and Councilmember Kipukai and Mal Rapose and myself picked the brain of Sylvia Luke. And she said that it's the dream of Hawaii to have a daycare for every kid from low income to middle class, to be in childcare at two years old, learning math and learning reading. And I tell you why. We way behind the rest of the states in academics. We gotta get our kids ready for the twenty-first, twenty-second century. Working in a garden, working on a farm is, is the best thing kids need, but it's a practice that you put in within the curriculum. Curriculum is important. So our childcare facility got up and running with Mayor Kaukami and his brilliant administrative team, Reiko Matsuyama, Sarah Blain. We, the council, approved ARPA funds. We have that building with Choi getting constructed right now, right in our backyard, where our two, three, and four-year-olds gonna have early education. They will be ahead of the game moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving to our next question, Kipukai Kuoli'i and Felicia Cowden will answer this one. Despite some progress, gender inequities, gender inequities remain in Kauai County's workforce. There are currently no active women firefighters. And at the Kauai Police Department, only eleven of the eighty-five patrol officers are women. There are no female detectives or women in leadership positions above the rank of lieutenant. What concrete steps will you take to ensure fair opportunities and advancement for women in these departments and in leadership positions across the county?
So far, I've been able to speak to both the fire chief and our human resources director. The fire chief told me that last year there were two women in the recruit class and both failed their agility tests. When I asked about those tests, the fire chief said, um, they were the same tests in place for many years and that human resources were, was working with a consultant to reevaluate the tests. I mentioned to him that in my research, I learned about gender-normed physical ability tests and the likely need to have different tests for women. He assured me that they'd work closely with HR and look into it. He also shared he knew about, uh, testing that the military does using a cumulative point system where a candidate could do low in one area and higher in another area and then they could still get to a, a passing score to qualify for the job. So it's very clear that in order for our county to achieve gender equity, uh, more female representation in our fire and police departments, we need to do a better job with our recruiting. Other departments like in San Jose, California, had success by specifically targeting women with marketing and outreach. When I reviewed the police recruitment section of our county website, I noticed that of the eight pictures, there were no women and only one picture of an officer with a little girl in a classroom setting. The HR director and I talked about the state legislature passing a bill this year asking Hawaii's police departments to significantly boost the number of women in their ranks. Uh, the bill sets a goal of thirty percent of law enforcement staff to be women and people of color. Um, we have thirteen percent, so we have some work to do. And I'm sure with the law passing, HR will be on it as well. But I'm happy to work with them. Thank you.
Thank you. Felicia Cowden?
All right, um, as having been an engineer in the early eighties and a councilwoman on Kauai, I definitely understand what it is to be, um, outnumbered in gender bias. Um, I think it's really important that people have jobs that they want and that fit their passion. And then sometimes it really does matter what your skill level is. Um, we have had women firemen, firefighters, but I will be honest with you, I'd rather rely on Abe to drag me out of a fire than for me to drag Abe out of a fire. So I'm just gonna be honest about that. And with the police department, we definitely need more women in it because women sometimes think and approach things differently. They might make a different type of police officer. They might be able to do something differently and perhaps work with women in a different way. But still yet, it's the job that you want to have and how you handle it best. And I, I'm just gonna add to that last question because I really wanted the last question. I wanna say, um, the family is the basis of our infrastructure. And when I am on the Health, Safety and Education Committee for the National Association of Counties, I have really worked for when we put children in paid, um, childcare. Well, sometimes the best person to care for that child is the mother. And I think if we were able to have like a seventy-five percent stipend go to that mother to ta- or the father, to have the parents take care of the kids, sometimes nobody does a better job. And a lot of mothers and fathers want to be the ones to care, take their kids. And that's how our species was developed and designed and they stay healthier and stay stronger together when you have. This is particularly that one to two-year-old time period. So I think we have to rethink that. Of course, I support people being able to have it. But in my business that I had, at one point I had seven nursing mothers at work 'cause I allowed them to wear their babies to work.
Thank you. Now we'll have two rapid-fire questions that all candidates will respond to. For the first question, please limit your response to three sentences. We will start with Kipukai Kuoli'i, Abe Abilado, Felicia Cowden, Billy DeCosta, Addison Bulasun. Three sentences max. It's written in bold font. Okay, here you go. What policies should the county council pursue to address the financial challenges faced by working families on Kauai? Kipukai Kuoli'i?
Financial challenges, you said?
Yes, financial challenges faced by working families on Kauai.
Boy, I think, um, everything we do should be addressing people's financial, um, challenges. Um, housing for sure, one of our most, uh, critical issues. Supplies is too low, cost is too high.
Thank you.
Oh yeah, three sentences, you said. Got the assignment wrong.
I don't. Abe Abilado?
Try, try to repeat again?
Of course. What policies should the county council pursue to address the financial challenges faced by working families on Kauai?
We gotta decide what we're gonna serve. We gotta serve, either we serve Icharo or we're gonna serve money. Thank you.
Thank you. Felicia Cowden?
All right. One, zoning. If we create zoning where people can live, work, and play in the same area, they can have a simplified lifestyle and require less transportation and cost. Two, all of a sudden it went out of my head for a second. Ah, oh my gosh. Zoning and then I would say simplified lifestyle where housing can be clustering families together. We are adding eighty U's and ARU's, but if we allow for family compounds, that also helps the cost relative to childcare and elder care and simplifying elements like that.
Thank you. Billy DeCosta?
Well, I'm a school teacher, so I'm gonna give you my three sentences. It'll be run-on sentences, but it'll be complete. First sentence, we're gonna take my three percent tax hike on hotels and TBRs and build out middle-class housing, which gives our county eight million dollars a year. Second one, we're gonna duplicate Kilauea Egg Park called Ainaho O'Kupu'u o Kilauea. It's an egg park that we allowed them to get a five-hundred-thousand-dollar grant and they built out this park across the island, so we have food security. Last, smart, slow growth in our trades industry. So put our tradespeople back to work and stimulate our economy.
Thank you. Addison Bulasun?
Raise property taxes on the wealthy and raise property tax, or ra- raise taxes on the visitor industry. Use that money to lower all three high costs of living problems, which is healthcare, housing, and transportation.
Thank you. All right, our next question, which again is a rapid-fire question, three sentences. Okay, we will start with Abe Abilado and work our way down. Felicia Cowden, then to Billy DeCosta, Addison Bulasun, Kipukai. Okay, what key initiatives would you propose for the county council to prioritize in order to support and uplift women and girls in our community?
Teach our young men how to respect women, how to take care of them. And teach our children, our, specifically our, our women, girls, to know that they are somebody and they worked something. Thank you.
Thank you. Felicia Cowden?
I'll start with a ditto on what Abe said. Then empowering women to have their own businesses and their own awareness that they can and raising their confidence level.
Thank you. Billy DeCosta?
Yeah, thank you for this question. Our, our county has, um, summer fun, summer programs. Lately, with the conversation with our mayor, he's empowering our young youth leaders to be female. So when they are doing the activities in eighth grade and freshmen at the neighborhood centers, they are the leaders, not just picking the boys as leaders. So we are doing that right now as a county.
Thank you. Addison Bulasun?
As a male, step aside and allow others to raise up. As a supporter, support from behind and make sure that they're empowered. And lastly, when there's challenges, rise up and join them together.
Great. Thank you, all candidates. It's a fun one. Kipukai?
I think number one, um, affordable housing, it's always the foundation of, of where people can improve their lives. Um, and then funding through our Office of Economic Development to our nonprofits in, uh, that do work in the community for women, specifically YWCA, Women in Need and others. And then the last one is, uh, starting, uh, helping women start up businesses.
Thank you. Thank you, candidates. Now we'll move into another collection of long-answered questions. It will start with Addison Bulasun, Kipukai Kuoli'i, Felicia Cowden. In May, in May, it was reported that the median household price in Hawaii has increased by three hundred and fifty percent over the last twenty years, cited from Kauai Now News. Each year, an estimated fifteen thousand Kanaka'o'evi leave the state for the US continent, often due to the skyrocketing cost of housing. To Addison Bulasun, if elected, what specific steps will you take to ensure more affordable housing is available in our community? Demonstrate your understanding of the root causes of this crisis and how your policies will provide meaningful relief.
Top three things that we could do immediately, which we have done, which is raise property taxes on vacant homes and on the visitor industry. And then distribute that funds towards, um, affordable housing projects that allow local community can walk into. Um, this is a difficult one as my wife just walked out 'cause we actually fight about this almost every day. Um, living in my parents' home and trying to figure out whether or not Zenith will keep calling Kauai home. Uh, it's a difficult conversation because I sit here as a council member, um, part of the team trying to solve this problem on the county level, but also as just a dad talking to his wife and son, figuring out how we're gonna do this. Uh, especially when the last reported price was a median home at one-point-four million. So knowing the problem is the top three things. The top three is the cost of land, the cost of infrastructure, and the cost to build. And where we can afford, uh, where we can make an impact as a county, uh, is in those three things. We need to make sure that we prioritize all funds available towards reducing infrastructure cost, reducing land costs, and reducing the ability for each homeowner or people who are looking to build homes to re- to afford to build. Um, and that's the only way we can do that. Um, part of it is by increasing, uh, more housing on the island. And part of that is also just fighting against the slow process in which to build. And so a lot of our work here at county council is to reduce these barriers that keep, um, making these challenges for our community. And so investigating, um, all, every single process that we have and making sure, is it necessary or not? Um, can we remove it? Will it still be safe? And if so, can we speed the process up so that our community can still keep calling Kauai home?
Thank you. Kipukai Kuoli'i?
Our housing shortage crisis continues to be our most pressing challenge. To both increase the supply and lower the cost of housing, we must support the building of more housing units of all types. As Housing Chair, I've led with the mayor and Housing Director, bringing about critically needed improvements to our housing policy that incentivizes private developers and inf- infill. private developers and infill town core multifamily projects. I've also helped pass bills supporting additional rental units by waiving fees for zoning, sewer, and building permits, creating a subsidy for water meters, and exempting environmental assessments, saving over twenty-thousand dollars per ARU. Former council member Evson and I got a bill passed supporting tiny houses, legalizing sleeping lofts, lowering ceiling heights, and allowing for stairs and ladders designed for small spaces. I helped bring about increased investments to our housing development fund, including the now-required annual investment of two percent, or estimated to four-point-five-million the last couple of years, of real property taxes. I supported the mayor's vacation rental tax increase to the same level of hotels, raising an additional eight-million dollars, as well as raising the rates on both categories, raising an additional seven-point-five-million dollars. This last county council has raised our housing development fund from five-million dollars to twenty-million dollars. We'll also continue to replicate successful projects like Kealaula Transitional Housing, Haupu View Affordable Rentals, and our Lima Ola Project in Lele that includes senior, single-family, and affordable housing. We're partnering with the state to go after tax credits and federal funding, and we're also providing fast-track permitting and streamlined regulatory process for affordable housing projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Felicia Cowden, when you're ready.
Thank you, Felicia Cowden. So this means a whole lot to me, and very recently, my younger son with his wife and two beautiful babies moved to Kentucky along with four other police officers from the same Kauai House District. So it hits in a lot of different ways. And while I'm happy to see them thriving over there, it's hard for me to be separated. So it means a lot to me. One of the challenges that I think is that we can't move too hard towards what I would consider socialized housing, where you buy on a leasehold and you can't, if you're a young person, ever really outgrow that. I support all the programs that our housing department is doing, but something that we've done in the past, and I want to see continue, is for people to be in the first-time homebuyers program and being able to access a significant down payment through our Affordable Housing Revolving Fund. When you look at the down payments, they can be astronomical, but if you have two, three-hundred-thousand dollars that goes down, that you have to pay back when you sell the house or whatever way, that allows you to get a mortgage that you can handle, but your house can actually increase in value. And as a younger person, you have a hope of keeping up with the market. And I think that that is an important way to be able to create this. And when you think, when we build an apartment just to put somebody, and we put in like five-hundred-thousand dollars. So if we're putting in less than that, and we're helping them have a home, and the amount of stability and mobility that homeownership happens and creates with the ability to take loans and other things, I think that's another piece that I would like to put in our portfolio.
Thank you. Moving to our next question, Abe Abilado and Billy DeCosta will answer this one. According to the Health Resources and Services Administration, Hawaii is designated as a health professional shortage area. Only fourteen-point-two percent of the mental health care needs have been met as of September two thousand and twenty-one. If elected, what concrete steps will you take to ensure the mental health of our community is addressed? What can the county do to ensure individuals seeking substance-of-use treatment are able to access the care that they need?
Okay, first of all, this is something that is, that I'm dealing with right now, with mental issues. First thing I'm gonna say, guys, is addicts and mental people, excuse me, mental illness, they don't know that they seek. They can be acting all crazy or whatever, and you can go over there and tell them, oh, we need to get you help. But if they're over the age of eighteen, they need their consent, or they gotta give you power of attorney to be addressed. For me, dealing with that, if you walk in Wyoming, you know exactly what I'm talking about. Yeah, that's my stepson. We need to figure out a way, for the people that we have now that is dealing with mental illnesses, we need to figure out a way that we can protect doctors or nurses, whoever dispense, there is, there is medicines for them that can keep them at least somewhat coherent so that they can build and get out of that situation that they're in. So trying to, trying to get that to them is one. Okay, for the people that is dealing with it right now. And then for the people that is up and coming, guys, culture, as, as, as long as we continue to serve money, guys, as long as we worry about where our next dollar is, as long as we where our next place we're gonna live, guys, more and more mental illness gonna happen, more and more drugs gonna happen, more and more things could cope, because nobody know where to go, because everybody too busy. So specializing in our home, specializing in our family, taking care of our family, in whatever way, money's not the way. We gotta love one another, bro. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Billy DeCosta.
Yeah, thank you for that question, Lexi. That question hits home. The Department of Education just may be the new ALPS teacher, ALPS Alternative Learning Program Student Support System here at the Kipu site, right where the county and the state put all of your tax dollars to build a mental facility to care for our youth. So we don't have it up and running yet. I believe we need a memorandum of understanding, because Grow Farm now owns the building. But I'm gonna be in charge of the curriculum that is delivered to our youth that's in mental health and drug rehabilitation. It's a purview of the county to get involved, and I believe our administration team is very supportive. We have grants always available to work in partnership with our congressional delegates to bring back funding from the federal, state, and county level. So it's, it's exciting. It's a long overdue process. This center should have been up and running a long time ago, but with the right people, doing, making the right decisions, coming up with solution-based plans, not just talking the jargon. It happened way back when Mayor Bernard Cavalio had started his whole thing. So hats off to every key player who's involved, and I'm just honored to be just one of the small specks at that center when it opens up. Thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you. Moving to our next question for Felicia Cowden and Addison Bulisane. In two thousand and twenty-two, the average age of sex trafficking in Kauai was nineteen years old, with forty-three percent of victims being Kanaka'o'i maoli and Kanaka'o'i vi girls and women. For Felicia Cowden, do you think trafficking is a serious issue on Kauai? As a county council member, what role can you play in preventing sex trafficking and support its victims?
Felicia Cowden, very, very important issue, and yes, I recognize the problem. And as committee chair for public safety and as a mother and a woman, I have put a lot of focus on that. Though I must say that boys and men are also hurt, maybe not at as high of a rate, but their well-being is deeply meaningful to me, too. And I want to give recognition to our Kauai Police Department with our Sex Assault Division and our Sex Assault Nurse Examiners. They have had a really good outcome, really improved outcome, I think about seventy percent completion on a lot of the violence on women. And what I'm just bringing it to sexual assaults, a lot of times trafficking is subtle. It's being nice to uncle in payment for the rent, you know, and in payment for the drugs. And I do a lot with suicide prevention and avoidance, and I sit in these circles. And I would say, if I have a ministry, it is youth that are ready to end their lives, and I pick them up hitchhiking. And a very common denominator has been abuse at an early age. And usually, whoever's abusing them of that, there's somehow some business end to what has happened for that. And it causes people to, as they say, want to recycle when they are young. And it is far more profound than you would think. And the thing that is insidious is it's not really a boogeyman from somewhere else. It's typically somebody close within that person's world and purview. So it can be somebody who is somewhat trusted or has too much access to the child. So I work definitely in that health, safety, and education piece with the federal government, the state government, and
Thank you. locally. Addison Bulisane.
It's, it's a terrible problem for us to experience here and anywhere else in the world. My wife is the lead researcher on this problem right now, and yesterday, we had this discussion about what is the biggest challenges that she's seeing in this research, trying to acknowledge and find ways and solutions for this policies, for policymakers. And the number one problem right now is that the interfacing agencies do not provide adequate information so that other partners can make good decisions in supporting those who are in these challenging times. Basically, what I'm saying is that the data that is out there is not even accurate. There's probably more people who are being abused, who are being... It's a problem that we don't even know that how big it is. And the main things that I'm working on, and we've been working on at the council, is to make sure that there is adequate information being provided to all agencies, then changing the protocols in which we address these problems. Because oftentimes, this just gets swept under, and it just becomes this, oh, it's not that big of a deal, because we, the data doesn't really show. But the data is clear that is a serious problem in our community. And so, my job, and I think the role of every legislator and everyone holding these titles, is to pull back the covers and be honest about the problem that we're facing and address it face-on. And really, the first thing we can do is look in our backyard and hold our own people accountable for making these bad choices.
Thank you. Moving into our next question, starting with Billy DeCosta, Kipukai Kuoli'i, Abe Abilado. Domestic violence is a leading cause of houselessness among women. Yet the Kauai County Housing Agency no longer prioritizes victims of domestic violence for the Housing Choice Voucher Program. Safe housing is foundational to surviving violence, restoring households, and achieving self-sufficiency. Survivors identify uncertainty about safe housing as their second highest concern, behind only immediate physical safety. Billy DeCosta, do you believe domestic violence is a public health issue in need of community response? How will you address housing instability for victim of, victims of domestic violence and their children in our community specifically?
Thank you for the question. I just want to recognize two of my alumni, Wyoming High School students walked in with their shirt on, so welcome from Wyoming High School. I noticed you guys just walked in the door. This is a very touching situation. I currently ran out a couple of my homes on the Affordable Rental Program. One of the ladies is a single victim mom with a daughter. So I don't just talk the story, I walk it. You know, it seems like the questions came easy for me, because I have solutions for you guys. I'm a solution-based guy. And right now, currently, on our housing fund, we have the ability to build this kind of housing. We have the ability to service this kind of women in need. Kind of touching, sometime, raising my three boys, I don't have a girl. I have just one wife, and she's the queen of my family. But I believe my job is to teach my sons how to respect women. So when they go out and meet women, that two, three, four, whatever women they meet throughout their lifetime, is not a victim woman based on my sons. I'm responsible for putting good men into the community. How we can solve this problem, we gotta work with our congressional delegates from the state and county levels, bring back federal funding, and together as a partnership, we can craft housing like we do for our houseless. Right now, we have a situation here that we're building, we have habitat for our low-income. We're gonna do middle-class housing, but it would be very nice if the county can work on homes for our victim women. Thank you.
Thank you. Kipukai Kuoli'i.
Yes, domestic violence is a public health issue needed in community response. I'm a strong supporter of the YWCA of Kauai and their programs, their Family Violence Shelter, and their new Vivo Ole Project Transitional Rental Housing Program for victims of domestic violence and their children. Actually, the Hawaii Community Foundation, through its Kokua Fund, is making matching donations to Vivo Ole Project up to a hundred-thousand dollars. Our county can support their efforts with this transitional housing project and others perhaps in the future, perhaps with CDVG funding. And then we can also support by replicating our successful Kealaula Transitional Housing Project, and the one that's gonna be blessed and opened shortly in Lele, I think, within a couple of weeks. And then we also have plans for Waimea, Kapaa, and Kilauea, so a lot more transitional housing. On childcare, the county is supporting affordable quality childcare by renovating the old Lehiui Big Save site and dedicating part of that new space to childcare and youth programming. We've dedicated seven-point-five-million dollars for the renovations. Merakami Division, which I fully support, is to provide early childcare primarily for government employees during the week, work hours, as well as other youth programs, such as the Kauai Police Action League during after-school and weekends. For now, we're referring to this as the PE Kauai Youth Project. Construction is set to be completed next summer, and we're currently working with Kauai Planning and Acting Alliance and the State Department of Human Services to draft an RFP to identify providers that could provide infant-toddler care as well as early education. Alo.
Thank you. Abe Abilado.
Okay, thanks, everybody. As couples or people in relationships, what is the number one argument that we have with our spouses, may or may not have? Starts with M, rhymes with honey, right? Guys, this all stems down from our socioeconomic situation. Right now, we're living in one place that is very unfeasible. And if you're not, if you're not, if you never prepare already, you're drowning. Yeah. Now, I don't condone any kind of physical abuse. I think that women and children should be protected by their dad. Now, how the father gonna know how to protect their children if he never learned from his father before? Okay? Again, going with the foundation of, for raising up men to take care of one another. Okay? Everybody look up, what do you guys want to believe in or not? Everybody look up to a man, and the bigger they are, the more attention you attract. It's just a fact. I never asked for that, but I just, unfortunately, or unfortunately, okay? Holding people accountable, okay? Guys who repeat offenders, going to court for beating up wives, bro, hold our justice system accountable. One slap on the wrist, not gonna do nothing and sending them back out. Guess what you think will happen? Same thing again. As far as the finding a place for women to, to get away from this abuse, because, bro, it's a mean, this is a mean subject that I grew up into right here. You know, finding a place, that is, that is the immediate question right now to try and find the transition. But that's what community also come into, sharing the burden of one another, opening doors. That's something that we can do immediately right now as one solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we'll move forward in wrapping up the forum with closing remarks from each candidate. Each candidate will get two minutes. We will start with Billy DeCosta and move our way down the line. For your closing remarks, Billy DeCosta.
How much more can I tell you tonight? What else you want to listen to? Billy DeCosta, easier choice if you want to give your grandchildren a chance on Kauai. We got decades of problems and decades of talking the same jargon, what we gonna fix? Housing, infrastructure, houseless. You know, we talked story with the mayor about how we can make things happen, and the mayor said, we need a revenue stream. Our revenue stream is your tax dollar from your property. Do you guys know that? That's how we pay all our bills. That's how we pay the police and the fire. It's your tax dollar from your property. That's our largest form of income. If we want to do projects, we're gonna have to raise your property tax. I took special responsibility to do a tax resolution that five of my council members voted on. Three, including myself, one, two, and three are here tonight. And we raised the hotel and TBR tax. We raised that tax to put a special account in housing so we can write one check when we like buy land, build infrastructure, and build middle-class housing, so we don't touch your property tax. A lot of people told me, don't do that. And I did it. Mel Repose and I did a bill, twenty-nine thirty-three, it's gonna be voted on pretty soon, where we're gonna allow We're gonna allow ag properties across the island to put one more dwelling on their property, one more eight-hundred-square-foot lot. Why did it take Billy DeCosta to come into council to put that bill into effect? You ask yourself why. And I met with Barry Kawakami. I met with his team. And we all agree that is the right thing to do. It's people that can work together, making decisions together, and solving our problems, you guys. I'm a problem solver. Sorry for my arrogance. It's a passion because I love Kauai. I'm a bond-and-raised local boy, four-generation Portuguese Spaniard. Thank you.
Thank you. Addison Bulisane.
I wanted to mahalo everyone that showed up today to take the time to watch this back on Hoike or live on KKCR and be informed with your candidates who will be potentially serving you as your county council. First, I just want to also mahalo everyone who voted and allowed me to have the chance to serve for my first term. You know, about three and a half months ago, I had emergency surgery where I removed a benign tumor in my spine that was causing me to be paraplegic. In that emergency surgery, the last thing I wrote, which was super scary, was that I love my life, I love everyone in my life, and I love that I get to do what I get to do. And when I woke up from that surgery, the first thing I thought about was my child, Zenith, and then my family. And the last, the third thing was all of you. To be able to live on Kauai and spend time with all of you is a blessing. Every day, I wake up with a chance of renewed hope and hope that I'm part of in creating a better place. But when I'm holding my son, I get that hope. And then when I put him down and I close my eyes, sometimes I dream and feel all the challenges that we're experiencing. And it's debilitating. It's debilitating the fact and point that at one point, I didn't want to run. I didn't want to come back because it feels too hard. And what gave me hope and what gave me the time to spend with you and want to do this again and sit up and put myself in torture, let you guys torture me, is because that there's so many people working on this. And it really means the world to me that there's so many people willing to step up. And I just want to be alongside all of you to make this better for all of us. So thank you so much for the opportunity to serve.
Thank you. Kipukai Kualii.
In closing, I would like to say mahalo Nui Loa to everyone here, those tuning in, and for the organizers of this forum. The questions posed to us covered affordable housing availability, gender equity, affordable quality childcare, housing instability caused by domestic violence, sex trafficking prevention, mental health care, and substance abuse treatment. Although most of these are not seen as core issues nor have line items in our county budget in the same way that public safety, public work, solid waste, and roads do, they indeed are issues of concern to so, so many of us. And because of that, we absolutely should be doing everything we can to bring attention and resources to addressing them. To give you some assurances, I have spent my entire life as an advocate and organizer for social and economic justice, even working and volunteering for years in the cross-section of both the labor and LGBTIQ movements. I've also been active as a Hawaiian homestead beneficiary leader, helping native Hawaiians get onto their lands and into their homes. I have always been one to show up, speak up, and stand up for our women, children, seniors, and families. Most recently, I've been showing up for women's reproductive rights. You can confirm with my sisters from Kauai Indivisible and the YWCA. Call on me, and I will do my best to be there for you. On the council, we absolutely can help bring attention and resources to the issues, causes, and movements that you care about, the ones that absolutely matter for making the quality of all our lives better. I humbly ask for one of your votes, one of your seven votes in this upcoming election. Love to hear from you, six-five-two-three-six-eight-four, kipukai.kualii@gmail.com.
Thank you. Abe Abilado.
All right, yeah, so thanks, everybody, for coming out tonight. Okay, so I'm the only candidate up here that never run. Okay, so I'm gonna use this time. I am a believer in Jesus Christ. So I'm gonna use this time to show you guys where my motives and where my stance is as far as running for this office. So I'm gonna read you a couple scriptures here from the Book of Matthew, chapter six, starting from verse twenty-four. It says, "No one can serve two masters, for you hate one and love the other. You will be devoted to one and despise the other. You cannot serve God, and you cannot be enslaved to money." Okay, I want to change that to another place. You cannot serve people and still be enslaved to money. Those two things not going to mix. It's still not mixing, never going. Okay, I'm gonna go on to read. It says, Jesus says, "This is why I tell you not to worry about everyday life, whether you have enough food to drink, eat food and drink, or if you're not close to wear. Isn't life more than just food and body, and your body more than just clothing?" Okay, verse twenty-seven, "Can all your worries add a single moment to your life?" Think about that, guys. Fear and worry is the number one thief of everything that you do in every single day of your life. How you guys know you guys don't wake up tomorrow? Nobody knows that. What is the number one rule? The golden rule that we have, love each other as you love yourself, yeah? And I will finish off with my last scripture right here. Come from Matthew, chapter five. This is my best, my favorite scripture that I always read right here. Matthew five, verse fourteen, "You are the light of the world, you all. No one lights a lamp and puts it under a basket. Instead, it's stood up in the middle of the house for everyone to see. In the same way, let your good deeds shine for all to see." So that everyone will praise your heavenly Father, guys. We're all in charge of ourselves and nothing else. Mahalo.
Thank you. Felicia Cowden.
Okay, Felicia Cowden, thank you all. I want to really give a shout out to YWCA. The last question I didn't answer, you guys really make a big difference in... I wasn't given that question. Can I just have like thirty seconds extra?
We will allow you to finish your closing statement, yes? That's where we're at.
Okay. All right. When you're voting for county council, the good news is is that you get seven of us, and we all bring to the table a different skill and a different piece. And what you're gonna see with me is I do my homework. I look vigorously. I pay a lot of attention to what are the unintended consequences. I'm gonna look at every side of the challenge. I'm not just gonna get an idea and say, that's what I want, and I'm gonna run through the finish line. I'm gonna make sure that we're gonna have a win-win-win around the whole thing. I'm a great student. That's how I got out of a childhood of instability and early independence. I have almost like a flawless attendance record, more than five years without taking a day off. I do my homework. I took advantage of the opportunity that we got this year to have staff members who are helping me extra research the challenges. I show up at all the meetings that are commission meetings, all different elements, so that when you get a decision out of me, if it seems like it doesn't quite make sense when somebody else frames it simply, it's because it's not as easy as it sounds. And I'm also pretty much the only one who moved here when I was twenty-one, and I have, what, didn't always live here. And I feel like I'm a good bridge to the many people who have arrived here who are also willing and wanting to help. And it's important that we don't abuse that community that is now more than even those born and raised here. So we have to think cautiously and carefully how we treat everybody like they're valuable and a good and creative contributor to our community. So you can see me work with respect across the lines. My name is Felicia Cowden, feliciacowden.com. You can always call me, six-five-two-four-three-six-three. And it's an honor to serve you. I'm looking forward to my fourth term.
Thank you. A round of applause for all of our candidates this evening. We say mahalo to the candidates, to the audience, you here with us tonight, and to the sponsors. YWCA Kauai, Kauai Planning and Action Alliance, Santa Club of Kauai, mahalo to KKCR and Hoike for broadcasting live, and Rice Street Business Association for their Kokoa with Sound. As we conclude, we wanted to leave you with this closing thought. Tonight, we confronted many critical issues impacting women, children, and our community. These constituents don't just want action, they need it, deserve it, and are demanding it. Your vote is your voice. Make it count. Thank you so much for being here. Aloha. Okay, great, great. You, too. Always an experience. We're gonna take a group photo in front. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Good job. Good job.